Mr. Rothmeyer.
Here.
Mr. Shiro.
Here.
Mr. Lancaster.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Ms. Penns.
Here.
Updates and discussion items, Mr. Murphy, what you get from next call of that.
Yes, sir. First item that we've got for y'all tonight is a special use permit for Fort Cannon Street. It originally functioned as a dentist's office. The new owner has put in an SUP to allow it to be operated as a residential use. He's looking to do long-term rental with the property. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing June 10th and unanimously recommended council's approval of the SUP. And we have advertised a public hearing for your July meeting.
The old doctor's bread office?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Second application, special use permit application that we have is, I have to jump ahead here. 516 Fourth Street. It's a request to place a manufactured home in the R4 High Density Residential zoning district. Again, Planning Commission conducted a public hearing at their June 10th meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the special use permit.
Probably also have to ask for a few.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything on that property that I can tell?
There's a structure, but yeah. Yes, sir. Through the CARES Coronavirus Relief Fund Act, Page County's been awarded a little over $2 million, of which they've identified a little over $400,000 that will be available for town expenses. We are currently summarizing all of the expenses that we have incurred to date. We've also identified a number of what we believe are qualifying purchases that would be reimbursed. These include additional message board signs. We would also look to install three new LED signs. One where we've got the current sign that we have to change manually. And then we would look at the other two, one at each of our parks. If funding was available, we might also consider three additional ones at each of the other entrances into the town. Basically, they would be purchased with the intent that as communication is necessary for COVID or other health-related issues, we'd be able to communicate with our residents. An ancillary benefit would be that we could also advertise other things when we're not in a COVID emergency response. We're also looking to upgrade all of the fixtures in our restrooms to no-touch operations. Also buying additional disinfecting supplies and equipment, sanitizing stations and the like for a number of our facilities. We also would be looking to purchase new laptops that could be used for telework or other operations, should they be necessary. Also, we would be purchasing iPads for council so that you would have remote access if we ever need to have remote meetings in the future. We'd also be looking at purchasing equipment for the council chambers. Audio video equipment that would replace the cell phone that is currently being used to broadcast our meetings. So that we could have a little bit better control as well as be able to look out at a speaker in the future for all of our future meetings. We're also looking at AM emergency broadcast equipment so that should there be an event, we'd be able to say tune to AM 1600 and listen to either the chief or Brian tell you in their melatonin voice what's going on. Let's see, other items that we're looking at. We believe, and we've had meetings with Page County, who is ultimately responsible for all of the disbursement of these funds. Our initial communication with them indicates that emergency response vehicles that were not budgeted could qualify. We would, the other item, it would be a new restroom at Ruffner Plaza that would facilitate people being able to sanitize their hands in a safe manner. Those two large-ticket items, we will continue, as all of these items, before we proceed with purchasing, we would confirm with the county that they are truly qualifying. And then as soon as we hear that, we would go forward with the purchases. We wanted to present council with the items that we're looking at. If you have any questions, concerns, thoughts about other items that we should be looking at. Oh, and the other item would be funding for some local business assistance. And we believe that all of these items would qualify. If they don't, we would have to readjust what we would be looking at.
That last one was one I wanted to touch on. So what forms can that take, local business assistance?
Not 100% certain. There are regulations. We haven't really gotten into that yet. I know that Meredith Dees has been chomping at the bit to work with the town to come up with what we could consider as far as grant assistance. And we will start looking at that as well. Again, before we proceed with anything, we have to go back to the county and make sure that what we think would be qualifying for local business assistance, they agree to, so that we don't get into a problem of spending money putting in for reimbursement and not securing the reimbursement.
That one's very interesting to me.
There's only one thing I didn't see, I wonder about. It's hard to get a test for COVID, I think. May haven't been tested yet. Assuming you go to hospital, I'm assuming you pay for it. I'm wondering if, could we purchase the ability to give out tests if we needed to?
I don't know. We're not a, we, the town, are not a health provider, so I don't know that they would be.
We get funding to help pay for that for some people that can't afford it or whatnot.
We can check into that.
They can mean as a donation to the patriots, I don't know if you can do it that way or something?
Whatever, you know, because I'm sure there's some people that don't have health insurance and they're kind of stuck.
It's great. You won't have to have health insurance to.
But where do I go with that? I don't know.
It's very difficult to find one. My stepfather tested positive and I couldn't even get a test even though I was staying.
I do know that Elkton, apparently, there's a, the state has a mobile testing facility, a truck. And I think it's going to be, I recall seeing that it's going to be in Elkton in the very near future. I couldn't tell you the exact date.
Winchester does all that. You go to Winchester. Winchester's still Shenandoah County.
Well, Steve, one of the questions I have is it's 424,000, but the items listed here are significantly below that. What's the gap?
Well, as soon as the county said, this is your number, they also identified that there are some countywide expenses that they believe should be removed from the towns as well. So the 420, primarily expenses that the county has incurred with their EMS staffing. They believe that they should be taken from the town portions versus the overall county portions. We are having a discussion with them. So while 420 has been identified, we don't know the exact number that will actually be available to us. In addition, the numbers that we put forward are best guesses. Plus, we haven't tallied up the amount that we have incurred to date. So yes, the amounts that we put in there are ballpark getting up to 400, but not complete. And so the numbers that we're identifying will be refined as we get further into it. There may be the ability to add additional monies into local businesses if we're not subject to the reduction that we don't feel is appropriate with the county. But we won't know that until they confirm an actual number that is available to us.
Are the supervisors working on that decision?
We've appealed to the county, we've appealed to the county administrator. And I don't know that it is, it will be a decision of the Board of Supervisors.
I also wanted to point out, and I talked to Steve earlier, I'm not so sure the county is the ultimate authority on what is eligible and not eligible. I think it's much along the lines of FEMA reimbursement. County is kind of reciprocal and kind of collecting the items and when they submit it. But it's my understanding with this, with the CARES relief funds that federal government still has the, I mean, feds still have the ultimate approval as to what they deem to be eligible. And I just think we need to be careful with some of these items. We're all, actually, that we don't make the expenditure, because you're not going to, the way the process is set up, I believe we won't know if it's eligible until we make the expenditure and county submits it. Is that?
Well, the process we have in place.
County will say it's eligible or not eligible, but the county won't know that the feds agree with that determination until they submit it. Isn't that correct?
And I think the onus is on the county to make sure that, because the money has been provided to the county, they are ultimately responsible to the feds for making sure that it is qualifying. So I think they are becoming more, they're, they are starting to second guess some of the initial, this is good, that they had told us. So we will be working with them and seeking out any assistance we can get at a state or federal level to confirm what we're pursuing does qualify and would not be questioned.
Is there anyone at the federal level that we could contact? I mean, I know we had a discussion, they're being very careful not to give anyone a point of contact.
Yeah, I think, I think the best thing we will do would be to reach out to our representatives and see if they can assist us in getting confirmation before we make any significant expenditures.
And all this has to be done by the end of the year, probably?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
For the shortcut.
Yes, sir.
Something else I mentioned, I don't know if you might want to look into that. I think we can also use some of the money to, for hazardous duty funds for employees that served during the crisis and still serving.
We will check back on that, yes, sir.
Check on that, because I think some municipalities are using some of the money for that.
Is that, this budget's, like the financial budget cycle that we have to have this summer calendar?
Calendar year, all expenses, all qualifying expenses have to be made by the end of December of this year. Okay, item D is the Little League concession agreement. The Little League has determined that they will, they have suspended their spring season. And as such, we haven't received it yet, but we verbally discussed it, that there will probably be a request for a waiver of the $1,500 remaining for their concession fee. If we get it in, we expect, we expect it to come in and we anticipate that it would be included in your July agenda for consideration.
Well, I like the thing that we read about what they sent out to the community, so parents can get their money back. There was a lot of options. It looks good.
Next item that we have is the Browns Building Listing Agreement. It is due for renewal and Mr. Dudley is here to give a brief overview of what's been going. We've had a number of viewings of the property. And I think he's provided you all a summary of that if he's available for any questions. We would include renewal of his agreement on your July's meeting agenda and open any questions y'all might have.
So I just thank you for the opportunity to market the property. You can look at the little handout that I've given you. It's been on the market for 173 days. About 100 of those days we were in a state of emergency. So I was, I'm really pleased with the amount of activity that we had on the property. And there's been real great cooperation with Steve. I've always tried to alert him when we do have showings. We've shown it approximately 20 times during the period. We have it listed in the local MLS, which over 85,000 agents have access to the information. We also belong to the Herschenberg Rockingham Association of Realtors MLS. We have it listed in there. It goes out through the MLS to lots of different websites. We have a property flyer available. We've also developed a brochure and we've targeted commercial brokers with that brochure. You can see some of our advertising that we've done, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. And we've tried and worked cooperatively with LDI, Meredith, and with Liz at the Economic Development Office. And we had folks that were interested in the property, we tied them together so they could give a few of grants and other opportunities that they might be able to assist with. I included just a printout in the MLS, the data that we share with other agents. And also, we've got the additional provisions addendum that we can talk about in just a second. I've shared with you nine active listings that our building is competing with. You can see those nine active listings. And also, I've shared with you for the last two years, the commercial properties that have sold. And I do want to point out, when we sold Fort Cannon Street, they were fully advised that they had to get that special use permit, okay, which you just heard about. So the buyer knew that they needed to apply for that. And those are the other properties that have sold in Luray that are commercial in nature. So the only other thing I would say, again, Steve and I have had a great relationship. We've done major cleaning up on Level 2, and that looks a lot better. It's a lot easier for us to show that. One thing you might want to think about is if we could do maybe some work on the front of the building rather than having that plywood up there. You could put one of the plexiglass pieces in just to try to clean up the front of the building. Also, when we walk in on Level 1, you know, that's where they stored all the bridge stuff. So if we could tidy that up and also think about the kitchen with the peeling paint. We've probably got lead issues there. I don't know how much we're willing to challenge that. But any cleaning that we could do on that level, I think would be really great. And the repurchase option, we of course disclose to anybody the provisions that we have that you've put on the building. And we always suggest to the folks that the town is the ultimate authority. This is negotiable. Be glad to, you know, they would be willing to visit with you and work with you. That, that repurchase option, I don't know, I understand your reason. That, that may down the road create some issues. I've never had a situation like that. I know you need to control the building, control the use of the building. Make sure it doesn't continue to be an eyesore and that the work is done on it. But something we might want to think about, whether or not we, how we could handle that matter without being quite as specific as we are here. You know, if somebody's purchased a building, they've invested money in it, then something happens. I know we want them to move forward and encourage them to move forward, but that's the only thing I would suggest. Again, we appreciate the opportunity and happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any estimated cost of listing, cost of doing that cosmic, you're talking about?
I would say minimal. It's just a matter of labor. Would you agree?
Outside of the paint, the paint would probably have to be done professionally. And unfortunately, the costs for government to do environmental cleanup is typically two to three times the cost for the private property owner. But we can definitely look at some of the.
Can we get an estimate, say about next week, how much to replace that glass or paint?
Yeah, we can, we can work on some of the more cosmic things, yes, sir.
And I do think a property like this, and Phil and I was talking about it briefly about it the other day. It's, you have to find the right buyer. And I don't think that the right buyer is going to happen upon this property by coming through the ray. I'm talking about someone who has very deep pockets. And so I think that there has to be a budget associated with advertising this property in those, in the right hands. And certainly about putting it on the MLS in Rockingham and Page County probably isn't going to be enough. And it's not in the offense to you. I think it's, I think it's that you have to have money to really market this thing, to really get the people interested in it and we need to see it. So I do think that the council should consider a marketing budget to build along with this for the renewal of the contract so that you have some money to work with. And then I've said it before, but you weren't here, so I want to say it again, just so that you don't hear it through the grapevine. And that is that I received a lot of complaints that we didn't put a bid out for solicitation with actionable plans from different realtors to see what they were going to do and how they could market the property. And again, I would just like to voice that I do think that that's important stuff and against something against you. It's just that's what I heard a lot of complaints about.
So you think, you know, it seems like a guesstimation.
Yes, sir, we'll work on that.
That makes me fully approve this, please.
Yes, sir.
But I got a question. Of the 20-some people, has anybody shown a lot of interest or is it just they walked in and no comment?
No, it's, at the end of the day, it just gets back to money. How much money they would have to invest to, you know.
Make something out of it.
Most of the folks have, that, I've had a commercial real estate broker from Northern Virginia that represents a client that has five restaurants. And, you know, he was enthusiastic about it, but haven't heard any more, you know, back from him. It's just the, not only the purchase price, which is for the square footage, is certainly within some realm of reason. But it's just the cost to take that shell and do something with it, you know? Of the folks that I've personally taken through, most of them were thinking about some sort of a restaurant on Level 1. Get something going, then deal with Level 2. That's what they were thinking. From an electrical, plumbing, HVAC standpoint, you know, that, you're talking about maybe using mini splits and that kind of stuff. If you do it piecemeal like that, rather than doing the whole building, so lots of challenges.
I bet it was two years ago, year and a half ago, Steve. I don't know how long it's been here. But I remember the gentleman that I brought from Charlottesville to the property. This is a gentleman has at least $20 million in property in Charlottesville, all commercial. And his main thing was property like this should really be a public-private partnership where they're working together to get grants to do it and then moving through that way. He said otherwise, there's just not, I mean, even if it's a dollar to buy the building, the amount of money that you have to put in it, you could never recoup through a business plan nor could you recoup through ever reselling the property. So normally, those types of ventures, he says, if there's not a profit within five years, I'm not interested. So I'd be willing to go longer on this one just because Luray needs some injection money, but I'm not willing to go 20 or 30 years before I never see a return.
We tried that and nobody, you sent out an RFP, didn't you?
Well, I was hoping it'd sell quicker. I'll just say that. I'm sure you were.
Everybody is, aren't they?
Yeah. Might leave the charge on that. But honestly, I've been surprised and impressed with the number of times that we've shown it.
Well, that's good news.
You know, and we've got people looking at it. You know, it's just like in basketball, you got to shoot it to score and you got to have folks out there looking at it. And I've been very pleased with that, so we just got to, like Leah says, we just got to find the right person.
So Bill, you're walking at the repurchase option. Is there some other mechanism that you've seen?
I don't know. How else can you?
It's a level of performance.
Yeah, how else can you control that? I don't know.
Because I get it, especially if you bought it for 200K and then the town's going to buy it back after you've done engineered drawings for 50K and they're going to buy it back for 170, nothing, right?
Right, you're already down.
Did we just, let's put some sort of restrictive covenant on it?
You did.
There are.
There are.
It's in there. They're listed out. It's in the paperwork.
Oh, I thought we did.
Yeah.
So, so that's kind of. Is there a problem with that?
I don't think so. I mean, and I think those are solid. The idea that the top floor could be residential and we want the ground floor to be commercial. Hopefully a restaurant. I think that's, I think that's good. I think we're okay on that. Because I think you had a buyer that was willing to turn it into apartment complex, right? That you didn't, that wasn't there.
Well, if somebody's going to buy it, it's like seven card.
It's a blood for every seat.
Somebody's going to, you just have to hold on to it, Steve.
Cool. But again, we appreciate the opportunity.
This comes back up with July.
Yes, sir.
Now, we got update, Mr. Christian.
Yes, sir. In your packet is a kind of a couple of page profile of the original plans. Talked with the project engineer this past week and I had fairly written that job off for the foreseeable future given the state of revenues and the Commonwealth and similar issues. He indicated that we were going to be doing our final closeout meetings next month. And we're going to look at final plans next month and then potentially go on to add and stuff. So it'll be interesting to see if that actually plays out, you know. I've heard the wind blow before from Stanton, so we'll see if that actually makes it. But it is encouraging. I'm, still have a few issues with the lighting plan. I have some issues with some of the drainage and especially the maintenance of traffic. So I'm going down for a meeting next month in July after the 4th holiday to kind of lay some of that out. And then later in the month, we'll have a final planning view kind of a thing and hopefully put together the bid advertisements that are going to be going out. So that's where we are right now as far as what they're telling me. We'll see if that actually plays out. But again, you know, it would be nice to do it. One of the things I was concerned about with maintenance of traffic is, and we learned some good lessons downtown here. Their communications division will be working with us fairly closely with the chief of, you know, Lynn and myself to try to make sure that we communicate properly. That's a challenging place out there with the intersection of business route and then US 111, the caverns being there, with the school being in Leeksville. You know, there's a lot of stuff going on out there, a lot of different times. So they're going to have to phase that maintenance of traffic and especially do a good bit of it in the summertime when the school's not in. So they don't have to worry about, you know, all that morning and afternoon stuff. So that's where we are. If I hear anything else, I'll let you folks know.
So you're going to Richmond, you say, Pete, talk to Pete Ock?
Stanton, going to Stanton after the 4th.
And the way you twist the arm about taking that road over at the airport, then?
Well.
It's been finished two years and we still own it?
Yeah, that, that's probably going to come up while I'm down there. I'm not going to bring it up. They're probably going to bring it up, so I'll get some information on that. I did talk with the Delta Airport email, John Morrie, today and asked where we were. He says they're still working with FAA on that. I said, John, it's been two years, you know, the town and county still are responsible for that roadway segment. And in fact, part of the old roadway segment that needs to be finalized out under the initial move when they built the hangers. So he said he's going to keep us updated on when it's going to happen. And I said, well, you know, we really need to make sure this takes place here and. you know, we really need to make sure this takes place here and I'm shocked that the state office is not, VDOT office is not just up and down on that thing.
Oh, my, my.
And that they're operating and maintaining that thing and it's still on private property. So, it's unusual that they're doing that, but it'll come up, it'll come up.
And airport issue, the town and county are going to put that bill?
Through the airport authorities, we're ultimately responsible for the budgetary audit, so yes, yes, sir. We would have probably 50%.
I don't understand why they don't take it over, it's still their standard.
You would think so, yes, sir.
It's something that council needs to, everybody needs to be pushing on that, get it off the table. Anyway, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Monument update, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir, last item for your agenda tonight.
Jason?
Jason, just so you know, you're up on the big screen. So, everybody's watching you.
Basically, what staff have been working with Reed and Reed to do some deed research
on locations of both of the monuments. The results of the research has indicated that the eastern monument over by the shopping center, the most recent owner of record was Herbert Barbie as trustee back in 1896. The heirs of the actual property are Abram and Virginia Henkel and it appears that that is still in private ownership, both the monument and the property. The western monument over by the post office, the owner of record is the Confederate Museum Association of Luray. We believe that the Confederate memorial associations were absorbed into the Virginia Historical Society in the 1940s. So, we believe that they would be the most appropriate property owner as well as owner of the monument right now. Based on that, staff would recommend that we send notification to the Barbie family as the trustee of record and to the Virginia Historic Society, basically letting them know that there has been vandalism at both of the monuments, that based on our deed research, they are the, they have an ownership interest and let them know that if they wish to pursue their ownership, ownership rights, they would need to contact their own attorney for independent research and basically request how they want to proceed with maintenance or dispersal of both the monument and the properties.
So, but you're really saying they had no interest in either one?
No, sir. Unfortunately, or fortunately, basically we have no property interest in either of the properties. The Commonwealth's Code that goes into effect July 1 regarding monuments has a provision for referendum, but it's only a referendum regarding publicly owned monuments. So, the original recommendation that staff had thought going forward with a referendum would not apply into either of the monuments since they both appear to be privately owned.
Which also means that cleaning cannot be done by the town at this time or are we just doing that?
We're doing that as the only responsible entity, however, part of the communication with the owner, the apparent owners would be that they would need to make provisions for future maintenance of the facilities.
Steve, a few years ago, these, one of the statues received restoration. Which statue was that? Which statue received restoration? And the town paid for that, 200,000?
I thought the town paid for the one on the east end and the east side might pay for the other one.
What is it? What was?
The daughters of Confederacy, I believe, paid for the, most of it over on the, by the post office.
We paid for the study and evaluation on both of them.
And how much did we spend?
160,000 for the work itself, plus, I think, and if I recall correctly, the initial study was 20-some thousand?
23,000.
Well, I remember, I remember it was bicentennial year and we were told that the foundation's blown and the monument could fall over. So, it was like a no-brainer, that, you know, we need to maintain it.
Jason, I guess I have a question. I don't know if I'm looking at you, looking there or looking at the camera, but anyway. The fact that the town has maintained the, this property for so long, is, is that, I mean, and I don't know the legal term for it, but I guess what I'm, like a script of easement or something, is it still something that the town, I mean, can we just walk away from it and say, not ours anymore? I mean, I guess we can, if we don't own it, but I'm just, the fact that we have maintained it so long and provided the maintenance for it, do we have any stake in it at all or any vested interest in it at all, in your opinion?
Well, the town does have the ability to, we need title to property, adverse possession, basically requires you to exercise a hostile claim of right and exercise at least an interest in it for a period of 15 years. It has to be something that's intentional, so you can't accidentally acquire title through adverse possession. So, I agree with the staff report here that the town doesn't have any current interests and really to take action, you would need to acquire interest in one way or another and I cannot mention how we require title to either of these short of a circuit court lawsuit.
And so far as a general referendum goes, the town, the town wouldn't have the ability just to have a referendum to get the opinion of the citizens, that should the town act to remove the monuments or not. I mean, we would have to have ownership to, to, just to get a consensus of the citizens through the referendum?
That's correct. The new authority that goes into effect on July 1 is for monuments that are on public plans. So, the town would need to acquire that ownership in one way or another to qualify to request that referendum.
But a referendum under, not particularly that, that statute, but just in general, if we wanted to petition the court for a referendum for community's input on the issue, even though, I mean, acknowledging that we don't have the ownership of it, but still that we would like to know how the community feels about it, is that, that's not possible?
That's correct. I'm not aware of any authority that would allow us to request that.
Okay. Jason, on the next page, you mentioned an advisory referendum. Is that, that's just a different term or?
Yeah, that was what we originally were recommending until we found out we had ownership.
That would've been the original.
Well, first page, it just says referendum and it says advisory, but they're the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Now, we will still continue to mow the grass and pick up litter, I'm sure.
Until we find someone else.
Jason, I have a question about that. So, we've had issues on this, since I've been on this council with private ownership having received town services to maintain properties such as mowing. I can all think back to that situation, mowing of land and the issues that arose from that. So, if this is a case of the town taking care of someone else's property, what sort of precedent does that set for the town if we continue to do it now that we know we don't own it?
If, now that we don't own it, the legal thing, the legal responsibility would be to treat it as other private property. When the grass gets too high, we hire a contractor and then we assess a lien on the property.
Have we heard from Mr. Barbie since that last letter and if he kind of wanted to remove him?
No, sir. And that's part of what tonight's discussion is, is if council agrees, then tomorrow, staff would send out notification both to Mr. Barbie and his heirs, his family, as well as the Virginia Historical Society advising them of what we have identified and seeking their input, how they will proceed with property maintenance and what their, what their plan is.
I think it's important that they stay draped due to the concern around the spray paint setting. However, I don't think it's appropriate to continue to spend taxpayer dollars towards maintaining it at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I read, we was going to get a quote for Samwise, I don't know how expensive that might be.
I believe it was a couple thousand dollars per monument.
So, 5,000.
Yeah.
How much, when?
Couple thousand dollars per monument.
And when we conducted the restoration, wasn't there some type of sealant or something applied to the stone or not?
That would've been our...
So, that the last thing would negate that and that would need to be done again by a, okay.
What year was that? Money spent, that 160 or whatever it was?
Oh, bicentennial year, like eight years ago.
Eight years ago. So, eight years ago, we spent the 200,000 dollars. We didn't do a property title research to figure out if the town...
Oh, no, everybody saw, different factor. I don't think it's something...
I mean, it's just shocking to me that we do it now, but we didn't do it then, spending money. I mean, it's just surprising.
Well, it's a political issue now, that's really all it is.
That's all it is.
Back then, we maintained it and I kind of disagree a little bit. I mean, you know, someone apparently owns it that had titles 100 years ago, we've been maintaining it, cutting the grass, we improved it. So, you know, I was the one who managed the project back then, so we do, we knew there were some sort of questions in the title, but may have the Barbies paid taxes on it in the last 100 years? I mean, so, I think it's kind of a gray area, sure, but I think if we took it down, the town or decide to keep it, I think we have a full right to do it, just like we did when we repaired it.
That's kind of where I was coming from, you had some questions to ask. I'm sorry to jump in.
But no, I, I'm not disagree with our...
So, what options do we have?
Effectively...
Not do anything or?
Well, effectively, it's to notify who we believe has property interest in both properties and see how they wish to proceed. Either, either entity could look for someone, again, working through their attorney. They could come back and say, town, we'd like to donate. And if they do, then we'd have to work with, with Jason to make that property transaction proceed. They could come back and say, are there any other interested parties that would like to, to take ownership of either the monuments or the parcels? And it'd be working with them to try and resolve however they wish to proceed.
So, they're both private monuments sitting on private land?
Based on the deed research that Reed and Reed conducted, yes, ma'am.
So, they could get, let give Mr. Bill to sell that for him and like?
I sound like one of them.
That's a new one.
Technically, yes, they are both, they are both existing parcels that are not, at least with the, the current county records, don't have ownership, designated owner assigned to them, but they are both independent parcels.
Well, it sounds like if it comes down to it, we can start collecting taxes on it, right?
Yes, sir, potentially.
It's a holding moment. Everybody says that? Need a German.